I would like to admit a couple more people and then say, welcome. You have arrived at the Wednesday, March 17th, Representative Town Meeting, informational meeting on the water treatment plant facility project. I think you'd be hard pressed to come up with a more important subject than safe, clean water for our town. So we're going to learn about the importance of this major infrastructure project that is proposed. And to start things off, I think I'm going to pass the microphone over to Peter Elwell.
Thank you. Excuse me one second.
Sure.
We're checking on Steve.
Okay.
Who is in the lineup right behind me, so we might improvise a little bit here if something's come up and he's going to need to join us a little late. So but I'm going to go ahead and begin presenting Chrissy, are you? Ah, there he is.
There he is.
Hello, Steve. Chrissy, are you loading the PowerPoint or is Patrick doing that?
I'm going to do it, but it's not letting me right now. It says it's disabled.
Okay, so.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, great. So while we're getting that loaded, I'll just say to everybody, good evening, and we've got a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to make for probably the first half hour or so of this meeting to present what we think is the most important information about the project. And then we look forward to answering your questions that you may have for as long as necessary this evening. So to begin the presentation, I just want to remind everyone that you've received a you should have received by now a mailed ballot from the town clerk. Those went out last week. If you have not received a mailed ballot that has the one question on it related to the funding for this project for the replacement of the water treatment facilities at Pleasant Valley, then please contact the town clerk's office to let Hillary and her team know that you haven't received that ballot so that we can make sure that every RTM member does have one. Then after the presentation and the Q and A this evening on Saturday, you, the members of RTM will discuss this project. Ask us any additional questions you may have at that time, and then you will cast your ballots individually by by making sure that you return them to the town clerk by Friday, March 26th at 5:00 PM, and you can do that by dropping them in the box that is by the light pole in the parking lot immediately behind the municipal center. We hope that after the presentation and the Q and A session this evening and the discussion you have on Saturday that you will agree with us that the project is essential. These facilities indeed are essential to our community, maintaining a safe drinking water supply and reliable, safe facilities for performing that essential function. What we have right now are facilities that are too old and in some cases unsafe ways that we're going to be specifically describing this evening. And we're also going to specifically describe the ways in which a very thorough, very careful process has been going on for the last several years to plan for the new facility. So the, there has been a tremendous amount of engineering done to make sure that this is the right project to replace the the current water treatment facilities and also that we're doing it at as affordable a cost as we reason reasonably can. These are expensive facilities to be sure. There's a lot of sophisticated equipment in them. The total maximum possible figure that's in the ballot measure, as you probably know already, is twelve and a half million dollars. We're going to speak a little bit more before we're done this evening about some refined cost estimates and the very favorable financing terms that have been offered to us by the state of Vermont that we think does make the project affordable for our utility system as well as important and essential for our safe drinking water. So with that, and also that that we're 100% ready to move forward, the one remaining step before we can move forward and bid the project, hire a contractor and and move forward to construction is to receive the approval of RTM for the financing. So to move into now the substance of the presentation, I'll ask Steve Barrett to take the mic.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I'm Steve Barrett. I'm the Director of Public Works. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight for this representative informational meeting about the Pleasant Valley Water Treatment Upgrade. It's really important, and I'm glad that you've joined us tonight to be more informed. The Pleasant Valley Reservoir has provided drinking water to the town of Brattleboro since 1920. The water treatment facility was constructed in 1989. Prior to that, the town's water system was served directly by Pleasant Valley Reservoir with only treatment being disinfection. So basically, we chlorinated the water and it came to town. So 89 was monumental as far as starting to treat that water that goes to our town. The Water Treatment Facility Construction Project began in 1989 and provided provided for the addition of the surface water treatment. The 1989 project included the construction of a raw water pump station, water filtration plant, and a 3 million gallon water storage tank. The water facility was designed for a 20-year lifespan. In 1999, the Water Department began evaluating potential improvements to the water treatment. Evaluations concluded in 2002 with a summary of recommendations for priorities and phasing for improvements. However, at that time, the wastewater treatment plant was also in need of upgrades, and it took priority, putting the water treatment facility improvements on hold. In 2017, the Water Treatment Facility Upgrade Project was restarted with a preliminary evaluation report which built off the previous evaluations. This report was completed in 2020 and is the basis for the project's proposed proposal today. The Pleasant Valley Water Treatment Facility has served the town of Brattleboro well. The water facility operators are to be commended for extending the life expectancy of the plant well beyond 30 years. This upgrade is necessary so our operators can continue to meet regulatory standards and provide health, healthy and safe drinking water to our community. And now I'd like to pass it on to Dan Tyler, the Utility Superintendent, who will provide an overview of the water treatment facility.
Thanks, Steve. Hello, everybody. As we go forward in this presentation, there's going to be quite a bit of discussion about the different components of the plant, and we thought it might be helpful just to give a brief overview of the facility itself. So what you're looking at on the screen is an aerial photograph of pretty much the entire facility. Generally speaking, on the photo, water flows from the right to the left of the photo. So on the bottom of the screen, you can see a portion of the dam and the reservoir. And then extending into the reservoir is the raw water, the raw water intake structure, kind of looks like a dock. That's where the water flows from the reservoir. The two pipes, gravity flow down to the raw water pump station. The pump, the raw water pump station is kind of hidden behind those trees directly in front of the intake structure. The raw water pump station pumps the water up the hill to the rectangular building, and that that's the treatment building, treatment facility, all the filtration treatment happens there. There's also a laboratory for testing, some office space, general storage. That's kind of the heart of the operation in that building. And then the finished water pumps from that building up the hill further to the round 3 million gallon storage tank at the, to the left-hand side of the photo. And the water is stored there and then flows from there, kind of right across the photo, down through the woods to Route 9 and is distributed through the town. Right in the middle, almost of the photo, you can see two ponds. Those are settling lagoons. So when the filters are clean, the backwash water flows to those lagoons. The solid materials settle out in the lagoons and then the water flows into the brook and the brook is located kind of beyond the tree line there. So I think that's that's generally, that's the area we're going to be speaking about tonight. And from here, our project manager and lead design engineer Chrissy Haskins will take over.
Good evening. So we'll we'll run through some, some summary of the need and then some details about the project. So the proposed improvements are necessary to ensure public health by providing adequate drinking water to all customers in demand situations. There was a regulation change in 2011 that reduced the regulatory capacity of the facility by one-third. The original design capacity was 3 million gallons, as Steve mentioned. And in 2011, on paper, the capacity of the plant was reduced to 2 million gallons. So improvements are required to restore the original design capacity of the facility in compliance with state and federal regulations. There is also significant health and safety concerns caused by the failing building structure. The building wasn't properly designed to carry snow loads and the piping loads that hang from the ceiling. The operators have been shoveling the roof continuously through the winter for 30-plus years now, which is a likely a main reason why the building has lasted as long as it has. Additionally, energy and building codes have changed since the original construction, and the existing building does not comply with current codes in regard to energy efficiency and insulation. And there are also concerns regarding operator safety, such as proper ventilation and limited space or access for maintenance. On the screen, you can see some photos of the plant. On the left is the the laboratory, and you can see in the ceiling there, there's a, there's a leak. The next photo over is just a photo of the exterior of the building. The flat roof is what they've been shoveling. Interior, the next photo down is the inside the filter room of the plant, you can just see how crowded it is and how difficult it can be to access some of their equipment. And then on the far right is an example of inadequate ventilation in the raw water pump station. And then a significant part of the evaluations that were performed focused on aging infrastructure. The building and the components inside the building were constructed or installed in 1989, and they were all designed with a 20-year service life. This is pretty typical for electrical and mechanical equipment. So in most cases, the components that are in operation today, including all of the water pumps, are original and have been in service for over 30 years. Some of the components have been rebuilt or replaced due to failure or or being close to failure. The building itself is the most obvious indication that improvements are required, but there are other short-life electrical and mechanical components that also need to be replaced. The technology behind many of the electrical and mechanical components has improved in the past 30 years, and the existing infrastructure is not as efficient as today's technology. So just a summary of the project development process. The preliminary engineering report was prepared from, it actually started in 2017, and there was some delays in there looking at, looking at various options, and we completed in 2020. This included an evaluation of the existing facility, all of the buildings and components there, a consideration of all of the alternatives, and that included a consideration of changing to a different treatment process. And we actually went up with Steve and and some of the operators to visit the Hanover Water Treatment Plant in Hanover, New Hampshire, which does membrane filtration. It's, it's a different type of filtration than what Brattleboro has. So the preliminary engineering report recommended sticking with the existing treatment system. Because the filtration works well and the operators are knowledgeable on and comfortable with the process. Various locations were evaluated. Due to various constraints, it was determined the best location available was right next to the existing plant, the existing treatment building. The preliminary engineering report was completed or was approved by the state in June of 2020, and the Select Board approved a funding application for final design in 2000, in May of 2020. We began final design in June of last year, led by DeFrain Group. We we coordinated with several other engineering disciplines, including geotechnical, structural, mechanical, electrical, and architecture. The State Drinking Water Division was also heavily involved throughout the entire design process with regular coordination meetings as we moved through design. And we also coordinated with Efficiency Vermont for a review of the design and recommendations on how to improve energy efficiency and reduce costs, energy costs at the treatment plant. So we have now completed final design and are awaiting the final permit issuances. So this is an overview of the proposed project. We labeled a few things on this in the next few slides, so I'll just go through and describe what the what the components are. So kind of in the left, towards the left side, you'll see an A, that is the existing treatment building. So there's a black outline there, and that's where the existing building is. B is a little bit to the right, that is the 3 million gallon water storage tank, the big brown circle there. So those are the existing structures in this particular area of the site. The proposed project would include the water treatment building, which is labeled as item number one on the plan. This building is larger than the existing to accommodate a fourth filter and provides sufficient space for safe access and operation. Number two is the attached maintenance garage. Right now, they don't have, it'll be a three-bay garage. Right now, there is no space for operators to perform maintenance, so they, they have to do it in the filter room now. So the, this will provide indoor space for operators to perform maintenance on equipment. And it also includes an EV charging station for an electric car, which will be provided to the operators. Three is a brand-new electrical service and the emergency generator. So we'll be, we'll be replacing, replacing everything. So new service from the pole. And then four is a new driveway, the, the existing driveway runs along the bottom of the, of the screen there, and then teeing off of that and going up to the new parking lot, that that's all brand-new driveway and parking lot. Item five, we're over on the right-hand side of the screen. We're going to remove the existing settling lagoons and replace those with an equalization basin and a connection to the town sewer, which will include flow control to avoid overwhelming the existing sewer collection system. This will eliminate discharge to the stream. So right now, the lagoons, they, the water comes into the lagoons, and the water that comes in there is actually the water that's from cleaning the filters. And so it comes into the lagoons, the sediment settles out of the water, and then the water overflows in and is carried down to discharge into a stream under a federal discharge permit. So this will eliminate that discharge into the stream and will allow for some minor modifications to improve the treatment process. Item six is the stormwater treatment will be infiltrating stormwater on site to reduce the runoff from the site from the new and redeveloped and previous surfaces. Item seven, so now we're down on the kind of lower-left corner of the page. Item seven is the raw water pump station. We'll be making improvements there, including a roof replacement, building waterproofing, new raw water pumps, new electrical and instrumentation, and ventilation improvements. This will fix the building leaks and improve operator safety and the station reliability. If we head up the page a little bit to the left, that's item eight. That will be, that's the existing chemical building. That's actually not in use anymore. It's the photo on the top-left corner. It's currently used for storage. It was the original treatment building before the town had filtration. So that building is no longer needed and is in poor condition, so that will be demolished. And then item number nine, right in the middle of the page there, or the screen, is the existing driveway will be entirely repaved. Portions of the driveway right now are gravel and just the, the hill is paved, so we're going to include paving the entire driveway. And then not shown on this plan, there is another item. That is, Dan discussed the raw water intake out in the reservoir. The the intake was repaired about 20 years ago. The structure, there's a concrete structure out there. It was repaired about 20 years ago. And the grout that was used to repair it needs to be replaced, so we'll be doing that with divers out in the reservoir. So inside the building, so this is, this is a floor plan of the proposed new filtration plant. So basically, the way we were looking at, looking at it on the previous plans, it's aligned pretty much the same way where the reservoir would be kind of in the, towards the, or off the upper left-hand side of the screen. So item number one, it's kind of right there in the middle of the screen. That is one new filter unit, so that'll be the fourth filter unit. Currently, there are three. So that'll be the new one that will increase the regulatory capacity of the facility to 3 million gallons per day, which matches the original design capacity. Item two is the next three filters to the right. Those are the existing filters that will be refurbished. So we're reusing the existing tankage and structures to save money. They are all stainless steel and in excellent condition. And we'll be replacing some of the older aging parts and replacing all of the filter media, which is what the water actually filters through. Three is just a little bit up on the screen. Well, actually, it's generally the entire filter room. Improving the plant layout to increase accessibility and efficiency, the ease of operator maintenance, and improving operator safety. Item four is going to be on the lower right-hand corner. New finished water pumps. These are the pumps that pump from the treatment plant up to the finished water tank after the water is treated. This will improve reliability. We're moving the, the pumps out of the filter room, which will provide for noise reduction. Moving directly up from that is number five. Those are the new blowers. The blowers are used to clean the filters. And with the new blowers, we'll have improved reliability. We're adding redundancy with a third blower. And again, we're moving them out of the filter room to help with noise reduction. Moving up on the page, up on the screen again is number six. That's new electrical and controls and new instrumentation throughout the plant to improve reliability and efficiency. And then if we just circle around across the top of the page to item seven, that is the new chemical treatment systems. The new systems improving reliability and operator access for cleaning and maintenance, that will all be a lot easier now. Moving left again is number eight. That is a dedicated storage space for spare parts and chemicals. And then continuing down on the page on the screen is a larger laboratory space, which will increase operator safety in the lab. Increase, improve accessibility and the ability to perform more in-house testing, water testing. Moving down on the page is another, that's item eight again, that's another storage room. And then moving down again is number 10, that's the new HVAC and plumbing systems, including a new plant water system. That's what provides the drinking water to, to the plant itself for the operators to use. And a green heating and cooling system. Moving to the lower-left corner, item 11. This is a larger, and item 11 extends kind of all the way up the page as well, up the screen as well. Larger office area with a separated breakroom space and staff lockers. Item 12 is an automatic fire sprinkler system, so the entire building is going to be protected with a fire suppression system. And item 13 is going to be a new SCADA system, so that stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. This is the brains of the entire water system. So it runs the plant and it runs everything in this, all the pump stations, tanks, all, everything in the system is run by the SCADA. And so we're, we'll be replacing the entire SCADA system, not just at the plant, but system-wide. I just wanted to touch on the proposed energy efficiency measures. This project includes several efficiency and energy-saving measures. The building has been designed to meet or exceed the current standards for insulation. All of the lighting will be LED inside and outside. The motors for the pumps and blowers will be premium efficiency motors and will be controlled using variable frequency drives, which allows them to run at slower speeds, thereby reducing energy use. The system controls are designed so that the automatic operation of the plant will have a preference to run in off-peak hours. There are times where the plant is going to need to operate based on water demand, based on demand from the water system. However, when it is possible to run on off-peak hours, the plant will automatically turn on and fill the, fill the tanks during off-peak hours. And lastly, the heating and cooling system is a, is going to be provided by a water source heat pump system. The source water will be from the 3 million gallon water storage tank on site. Water will run from the tank through a double wall of heat exchanger and then be returned back to the tank. The heat pump is similar to what you might have in your, in a home or office. But those use, oftentimes, they'll use outside air, so we're going to be using water that's already available at the plant, and it's going to be recycled right back into the system. This will allow for heating and cooling of the entire building without a fossil-fuel-based heating system. Additionally, most water treatment facilities are not completely cooled in the summer. They don't have, they, they usually only have air conditioning in the offices, but the rest of the plant is not cooled. By cooling the entire building, the likelihood of condensation on exposed pipes and tanks will be reduced, which reduces the need for dehumidification. So for the total project cost estimate, this includes, when we, when we, when we talk about total project cost, we we include construction costs, contingencies, final design engineering, construction phase on engineering, and then what we call legal, fiscal, and administrative costs. The total project cost has increased since the preliminary engineering report. It was 11 million originally and we are at 12 and a half million now. However, there were also several modifications and additions to the design as the project went from concept to final design. This includes the heating system, driveway paving, pump station, roof and waterproofing, some modifications to the chemical feed designs and increased pump sizes. And then on the, on the right side of the screen, you can see the table breaking down the various components of the cost estimate. So the funding source for this project is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And we abbreviate that as DWSRF. So this program is a joint, is, this program, this program is joint-funded by the US EPA and the state of Vermont. The program offers low-interest loans to municipal water systems as well as potential forgiveness or subsidy, which both of those things mean grants. The interest rates vary from 0 to 3% and the terms vary from 20 to 40 years. The final design phase was funded through a 0% interest planning loan from the DWSRF program with a potential forgiveness of up to $50,000. In February of 2020, the town applied for inclusion on the DWSRF 2020 priority list. This list is how the state prioritizes and, and decides who gets, who gets funding. The Brattleboro Treatment Plant Project was listed as a top priority project on the 2020 priority list. Due to the size of the project, the town agreed to allow the DWSRF program to split funding between the 2020 list and the 2021 list. Based on recent discussions with program officials, there is likely some subsidy still available for this project on the 2020 funding list. The 2021 funding list subsidy offers have not yet been published. However, once the list is finalized in June, this project will be on the top of the list for available subsidy. In February of this year, the town submitted a loan application for construction funding in the amount of 12 and a half million dollars. Loan approval is contingent upon a passing bond vote. And with that, I will turn it over to Peter to discuss some of the details of the financing terms and anticipated freight impacts.
Thank you, Chrissy. So I want to take just a moment to those details to just underscore the importance of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund that Chrissy described and the the value that that has provided here in Brattleboro to us in our prior water work and the important impact it has on the financing that we're discussing and that you'll be voting on. Because of how heavily that this, these funds are subsidized by the federal government and administered by the state government to promote having communities that might otherwise struggle to afford to do these kinds of improvements to maintain safe drinking water, to make it possible for us to do that. And so, you know, we have this situation where while the overall terms, we, to be conservative in the phrasing of the, of the question that's on the ballot, we say for up to 30 years and for up to 5%, but typically these drinking water loans come in at 0 to 3. Right now, there's especially favorable terms where we have been offered the tentative terms of the financing by the state officially now at 0% for the full 30 years. So so we know, even if we were to need the full 12 and a half million dollars, we know that our annual payment would be a maximum of $416,666. But we actually also know that we've already received some subsidy. And so in the finalizing of the financing documents, our expectation is that the, the maximum we really will be dealing with in, in putting together this package with the state is the middle figure there in the table, 11,962,335. That would be borrowing, if, if the full cost of the 12 and a half million dollars for the project is needed and the subsidy that we've already received applies, but we don't receive any additional subsidy is what that would be. And that would bring the annual payment down to 398,745. But as Chrissy described, we actually have a really strong project. The, the fact that it is so needed, that the, the need for the project is well documented, the size of the project, the population that's served, the fact that it's important to commerce, not just in Brattleboro, but also in our region. All, all of these things and the economic profile of our community all contribute to scoring high on the state's system of deciding who receives the, what they refer to as a subsidy, which is in fact turning part of this loan into a grant. And that can be for up to 25%. And so we stand a really good chance. We can't assure you that we would actually only end up borrowing $9,375,000, but we stand a really good chance of actually landing there or somewhere in between there and the 11.9. So it is possible that if you approve the funding on the ballot for this item, then as we move forward in the next several weeks to finalize the terms of the, the financing and bid the project and move forward towards construction, that this actually could be finalized at a rate that would cost us $312,500 per year in repayment. Chrissy, if you could go to the next, thank you. Why that's especially important? Obviously, you know, borrowing money for 30 years at 0% interest, I think speaks for itself in terms of the opportunity that that represents for us to move forward with such an important project. But it is especially important because a year ago, when we were preparing the five-year rate ordinance, that would be sufficient to pay for this project for the debt service that was anticipated on this borrowing and for all the operational costs anticipated in the system over the next five years. We used in the calculation of that rate ordinance, an estimated annual payment on this project of $417,882, 417. That was based on the 12 and a half million dollar, actually, it was actually based on the earlier number, but, but using a 3% borrowing is what we were anticipating at that time. So it was actually based on the $11 million estimated cost of the project, but with 3% borrowing and some other factors that landed us at 417,082. Because we now know for certain that the maximum we could possibly have to pay is 416 and we are likely actually be below 400 and possibly as low as 312. We're in a very favorable position because we know for sure that the rate ordinance that was adopted by the select board for 2020 through 2024 will be sufficient for us to pay the financing, repay the financing for this project. And what that means in real dollars to real households is shown in the table here. So these are for the next four years, the final four years of the five-year ordinance, 21 through 24. How the overall rate increases for the water system would impact three actual sample households. One where there's just one adult consuming water, one where there's two adults but no children, and one where there are two adults and three children living in the household. And as you can see, the, the cost increase is an annual increase for the whole year of between 11 and 20 dollars and broken down to quarterly payments since we're billed quarterly for consumption. Ranges between $2.80 and just over $5.00 as the increased burden to actual households. So, you know, based on your own circumstances and consumption of water, you kind of can have a feel for how this would impact you. And for such a major generational improvement, something that's, you know, once in 30 years and so important to the safety of our community as well as the functioning of our community, we're, we're feeling really good about the fact that the state has offered this 0% financing and that these already approved rates over the course of the next four years would be sufficient to repay the debt and pay all of the operating costs of the system during this time. We'll go back now to Chrissy and she'll describe the project schedule for how we would move forward if you approve this.
Thanks, Peter. So on the project schedule, the first two tasks there have been completed. That's the completion of the final design and submittal of the construction loan application. We are at the third task right now, March 17th, the informational meeting. Once the bond vote results are received, so that's the bold line in the middle of the page there. So once bond vote, bond vote results are received and assuming a positive bond vote, the project is anticipated to be advertised in early April 2021, followed by a contract award in late May. The construction start date is largely up to the contractor. However, the town is anticipating an early summer start. The construction duration is expected to be approximately 18 months with completion in December of 2022. However, if there are some, if there are shutdowns of the project for winter or procurement delays, the completion date could be later than currently anticipated. And that is the end of our presentation. So I'm going to pass it back over to Peter so we can open it up to questions.
Thank you, Chrissy, and I'm going to defer to Tim as informational meetings are select board meetings. And so Tim will moderate the Q and A session.
Absolutely, and I'll go ahead and do that. Thanks for everyone's patience for saving your questions till the end here. And I think just to keep things smooth, Peter, if, if you don't hear from me, you can be first up in answering the questions.
Okay.
And then we'll go down the line. If you don't have the answer, you can just blurt, blurt your thoughts out after we take a question. So first up, I'm going to invite Rick Morton. I think Patrick is helping me drive here, but if he's not, I will send that signal to Rick. Make sure I've got my. We see you. Hi.
Okay, hi. This was an excellent presentation. I'm very impressed. I had a couple of thoughts though. You can only cover so much ground in 30 minutes, so here's some extra thoughts. I'm wondering about your capacity, three, you know, you're going from two to three million per day, I think it is. Maybe someone could speak to the expected population growth and demand, commercial growth for the next, you know, the next generation. Another question that came to mind is, is this change, is this changing staffing requirements for servicing it, maintaining it, operating it? So one is capacity versus growth, staffing needs. And then I was just curious, because I'm sort of new at this. Is this rate increase going to affect all residents of Brattleboro, whether they're on city water or not? And the final thought that I had is any comment you can make about physical security of the plant and its, you know, components and any thoughts about data breaches and possible? We've seen some news stories, so.
Sure.
I'm done.
Thank you. So we'll, I'm, I'm going to speak to a couple of these and then Chrissy and Steve and Dan, I'm sure will have some to add particularly regarding the capacity part and the security part. So on the question of staffing, no, we don't anticipate any additional staffing. We, the operation has been planned in a manner that would allow our current staffing to be sufficient to operate the new plant. On the customers question, the, the customers of the water utility will pay through the quarterly bills to the utility system, both the cost of operation and the cost of the debt service on this facility. This is not to be paid with general taxes, so there won't be a cost to anybody who is not on the town's water system. The utility, both the water and sewer services in Brattleboro function as what's called an enterprise fund in government accounting, which means that they, they operate in, as a utility fund combined as a small business. Actually, not, not even that small, based on Brattleboro's size and our, our operations. But they stand alone from taxation or other sources of town revenue and rely entirely upon the rates that are charged for the services that are provided. The capacity question, the, the technical team will add more detail to this to better explain it. But the, we're, we're not increasing, we are increasing the ability to produce water by adding the fourth filter, but as it's a factor of redundancy rather than a factor of actually increasing the capacity of our system. The, as Chrissy mentioned, there was a regulatory change, actually quite a while ago now, that required that you have the ability to process more water in order to keep up with the needs of a system where your design capacity is 3 million gallons per day. And so right now, our plant is deficient by modern standards. We're not actually increasing the permitted capacity of the plant and of the system. That's not, that was not done casually. That was done actually based on the process that the engineers go through to make determinations about how to properly size a system based on the updated demographic data. And we'll come back to that in a moment after I make a quick comment about the security so that you can get more information from the technical team on that. And then on the security question, the SCADA system that Chrissy described, that is the, all of the controls for not just what goes on at the plant, but what goes on at the pump stations and the tanks and elsewhere in the system. That system is, actually does have security features built into it already. The one that we're operating with today has that. And as she mentioned, we plan to change that out and upgrade to a better SCADA system that has the most modern security protections there. So that was a great concern to us just within the past few months when there was the, the breach of a system down in Florida. The select board raised some questions about that, wanted that addressed by Steve at a select board meeting, which he did to make sure that it was clear what our current protections are and built into the plans for this upgrade are improved security as well. So with that, I'm going to step back from my 30,000-foot view and ask the, the folks who can shed more detailed light on the capacity question and the security question to do so if, if that's needed.
Yeah, I guess I can start off. What we've seen, our trend is, is consumption has continued to go down in the town of Brattleboro, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Water-saving devices and such. So your question about the population, I think Chrissy, that was in one of our applications, the population trend. So that's part of this equation also when we did our application to the state for the design, actually when they reviewed the design of the capacity for this plant. And Peter said it well with the security. We've advised, you know, our engineer, that's our electrical engineer that's doing the SCADA system to, to look at all the security measures in light of recent events. He did assure us that the system we have was not the same as the system that had some issues that was in the media. But anyways, he will also look at what improvements we can make for security. Chrissy, anything to add?
Sure, the, out of the report, the population fluctuation has, so population in Brattleboro has pretty much remained fairly level. It's fluctuated up and down by about 2 to 3% since 1970 with an overall decrease of 1.6%. since 1970 with an overall decrease of 1.6%. Your water production over the past eight years has been pretty flat. It fluctuates up and down slightly, but it it really centers right there at about 1.2 to 1.3 million gallons on average. So we did not, we actually did project out to 20 years, we projected out to 2040 and that showed a projected average day demand of 1.3 million gallons. So right now you're at 1.2. So not a huge amount of growth expected here in terms of water supply.
And there are also peaking factors that the engineers use. So that's why you're hearing, you know, 1.3 as an average consumption. But, you know, still sizing the plant to to be a 3 million gallon gallon a day facility so that if there's a major fire or if there is, you know, some other situation that causes temporarily a large increase, the system can handle that rather than being overwhelmed.
Thank you to all three. And next I will take Ricky Rosati's hand. Ricky?
Yes. Thank you. I would appreciate my audio not being cut off until after I end my statement by saying I yield my time. All of the people in the administration and officials involved in moving this water treatment project have denied allocating funding for lab certified water testing schedules recommended by the state health department for low income residents. This is not a new issue. This water insecurity complaint has been presented consistently for at least the last three years. Spending on filtering water at a plant which travels through miles of over 100 year old pipes while not investing to verify the quality at the taps of people who cannot afford the testing is insanely unreasonable, inexcusable, and unforgivable, neglect for public health safety. Also, there is no democratic fairness or transparency for any article, especially expensive agendas to be kept secret. I am looking for a second motion for a 600 for budget reserved for managing low income residents applying for lab certified water testing and filtration is needed and a second motion to have all of the representatives' votes become publicly visible records for constituents to access and hold electors accountable with. I yield my time.
Okay, Ricky. I don't believe, and anyone is welcome to correct me on this because I wasn't expecting to make any kind of ruling at an informational meeting, but I don't believe motions would be appropriate in this setting.
That's correct.
Anybody among the four of you, would you like to address any aspect? There was more of a statement that Ricky made, but if there's anything in there that you'd like to take a shot at, please feel free.
On the balloting portion of Ricky's statement, I'd just say that the state law requires that this type of a borrowing question for representative town meeting be that the decision be made by an Australian ballot process. That's why there's a paper ballot that's been distributed and will be returned to the town clerk on this matter. That wasn't a discretion, that wasn't made, a decision made at the discretion of the town. But is what we're required to do to comply with the state law in that matter. The testing question, there are very rigorous standards that apply to the operation of public water systems. The town complies with those, which includes not just the processing of the water in the manner that's been discussed tonight and the testing of the water at the plant, but also testing of the water throughout our system in the distribution system that is owned and maintained by the town. What Ricky spoke to was requests that they have made of town government to do testing in private buildings. And they accurately reported that we have mostly declined to do that because in fact that is outside the scope of the services that we generally provide. There actually have been a few occasions when we have done testing in Ricky's building, particularly based on a history of concerns that were raised there. I don't know that it's appropriate in this forum when we're focusing on the question of financing the water treatment facilities to go further into that, but we certainly could some other time. Steve and Dan in particular could talk about work that the public works department has done in that area to try to be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move on to Tom Franks, please. Welcome.
Additional cost, was that a volumetric fee? Or was it a, can't hear me?
It's a little rough for me. I'm not sure if other people have better.
I think I understood. You're asking about the increase from approximately 11 million up to 12 and a half as the overall cost estimate?
No, the user volumetric fee. Hold on a second. Is that based on a volume basis or is that a service fee based on a meter basis?
Are you talking about the consumption or about the the rate, the fees? Consumption. So Chrissy could speak to that. Again, we're not anticipating increased consumption. We're resizing the the processing capacity of the plant to meet the current regulatory requirements. To produce the amount of water that we produce on a daily basis, we are required to have the ability to produce more now than the ability we were required to have back in the late 1980s.
If I may, can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, what I was asking was you, you were showing a bill impact or an impact on the, oh, is that based on a volumetric? In other words, you know, X cents per gallon? Or is it based on a sort of a meter basis?
Okay, I understand now. Sorry. It's actually both. So everybody in the system pays a base fee to, based on the size of the meter, the size of the service that comes to your property. And then there's also a consumption fee based on how much you consume in any given quarter. And so those are real bills. We're using the sort of average consumption for over a period of time for each of those three households. You know, obviously using them as sort of examples that might or might not you know, be perfectly, a perfect proxy for every other one person or two person or five person household, but that we believe that they reasonably show sort of the range of consumption for average households. And then applying the rate ordinance for 2020 to 2024 to that rate of consumption using the, the, you know, incorporating also the base rate. So those are those, the actual billing increases for those those particular customers.
And I just had one question. How do you build a new facility using three old filters? That was, that just.
Christie?
So those filters back in, back in the late 80s, when the plant was originally constructed, the town spent a little bit of extra money on them and purchased stainless steel filters. And so typically what we find is that the stainless steel filters are, they they hold their condition really well and they are able to continue to be used. We are swapping out the systems, we're going to be replacing the systems in them that clean them. So that'll all be replaced. We're going to be replacing some of the hardware on them. We're going to be replacing a mechanical gate valve that that is used to in the, in the backwashing process. So a lot of the electrical and mechanical components of the filters are going to be replaced, but the the tanks themselves are stainless steel and in excellent condition.
I guess I'm not clear tonight. You have three tanks in in an existing facility. They're going to move to a new facility at some point. How do you keep water flowing during that period?
Steve was gonna.
I can get this one. I heard you loud and clear, Tom. So what's going to happen is we're going to build the new facility right next to the old facility. The first thing that will happen is a brand new filter will go into the new building. Then at some point, we're going to take one of the filters out of the old treatment facility, recondition it and put it into the new treatment facility. At that point, we'll have filters to enough to keep up with capacity. We'll get the new plant up and operating, make sure that it's producing good, clean water. Then we'll decommission the old filter. Okay, the old filter plant. And then those filters will be moved over. Now during that time, there will be, there's some risks there. I won't say there isn't. We do have the retreat wells, which is our backup supply system that can accommodate, we, it looks like around 700 plus thousand gallons a day out of, you know, an average of 1.2. So there'll be a time period there where we're making this transition, okay? That you know, will be squeezing our fingers. But we also have a lot of capacity. That's where this 3 million gallon storage tank at the facility, the 1 million gallon storage tank at Black Mountain and the million gallon storage tank at exit one come into play. This is, that's where those tanks really help us out in a situation where if you had fires or whatever, I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Yes, and thank you to Chrissy as well because your answer, even though it wasn't the answer to that question, it was on everyone's mind, I'm sure. So I'm going to next take Kathy Urfer. Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the really great presentation. I have a couple of questions, so maybe it makes sense. I'll just run down the questions and then.
Absolutely.
Have at. One is you mentioned removing the discharge from the lagoons to the stream and then putting that into the sewer system. Could you talk a little bit about what, is it just sediment in terms of the pollutants in the lagoons? And then also, can you talk about the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant to process that? Just as a point of information. So that's one. I was curious. You mentioned the SCADA system replacing its system wide, and so just curious what that means in terms of where the other parts of the system reside. And then the other question, and if it's in our packet, please direct me, but I think it's not in there. Can you talk about the the debt, and I may not be saying this quite correctly, but the debt paydown remaining in the enterprise fund from the previous wastewater treatment plant upgrades? So kind of like where are we as we pay that debt down and then add this debt to it? Like where can we find that information about what that looks like over the course of the next 20, 30 years or whatever?
So the debt information we'll send out in an email between now and Saturday. It's a good question that I can't answer right now, but we certainly have the information available and we'll, we'll send it out. The other two questions, I think a combination of Steve and Chrissy probably are, that are able to answer.
Yeah, I can hit the, your question about the waistline that currently we have lagoons that goes to unnamed tributary, which eventually goes to the Whitestone Brook. The discharges from the backwash will now go down a waistline that will go directly to the wastewater treatment plant for treatment. So all the, so there'll be no longer, there won't be this discharge from the backwash from the filter system into this tributary that goes to the Whitestone. All that water will go to the wastewater treatment plant. There is capacity there for this flow. We've looked at that. And the SCADA system question that you asked, there's multiple points within the system. There's, there's pump stations. We have pressure reducing valves throughout the system. So each one of those components that's linked to the drinking water system, fire pumps, they're all connected to the SCADA. The pressure reducing valves, in event there's a fire, they can be operated through the SCADA system and opened up to give more capacity. So there's various points throughout the whole system, and that's what we're talking about when it comes to those additional SCADA points.
Okay. Kathy, I'm going to assume that you your questions were answered.
Just one clarifying that what is, so what's actually being treated in that lagoon water? Is it primarily sediment? Is there nitrogen and phosphorus in that? I mean, I imagine the reservoir itself is pretty clean because of where it's at, but you know, just curious like what specifically is treated in that? Or needs to be treated in it, I guess.
I can, I can take that one. So from the, the water that comes from the reservoir, you know, it's, it's surface water. It has sediment in it. It has minerals in it. You know, there's, in the fall, there's some, some manganese in it. And so that raw water goes into the plant. And the, the purpose of the filters is to remove all of that from the water. So it's removing the sediment. It's removing some of these larger particles. And part of the treatment process forces these particles together to make them bigger so that they can be removed from the filters. And then the filters need to be cleaned from time, you know, actually a few times a day, the filters are cleaned. And in that process, all of that sediment that has been caught by the filters gets washed out and it gets washed down into the lagoons. And what happens there is that the water is just allowed to settle. And so those particles drop out of the water and they stay in the lagoon and then the water overflows. So there are drains in the lagoon, but those are closed normally. And the water will overflow out of the lagoon and the sediment stays in the lagoon. And so the town actually has to clean those out. Every year, the town cleans out the sediment from the lagoons and has to, has to pay to dispose of it. And so that's all, that whole process is going to be eliminated. And we're just going to, all of that water will go to the wastewater plant and be treated.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. I'm going to invite Tom Green next, and while we're waiting for Tom, I'll just invite everybody that, once you ask your question, just stay unmuted if you don't mind unless it's loud where you are, just because if you put yourself on mute, then we have to send you a please unmute thing. So it just makes it a little smoother. If you don't mind. Tom, are you?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah. Two questions. One is, what I'm hearing is that our fire water, I guess, coming out of the hydrants is actually treated water. Is that typical for a water system? It seems a little strange to me that you have to use treated water for firefighting. And the second one, you may have said it, but I don't think I heard it. What is the service expectancy of this new facility in time?
I can take that first one, Peter.
Sure.
So there are some water systems that have separate fire hydrants or a fire system. But that can be quite expensive if there's literally, you know, 8 to 100 to 1,000 hydrants in the town of Brattleboro. So if you disconnected those from the water system, the drinking potable water system, you would have to have a whole another distribution system. So really, the hydrants are also used to assist us with distribution of the water. In some cases, there's, there could be breaks where we use hydrants to bypass and give customers water. And also you want that water to be potable water that goes, you know, to those hydrants. So it's, it's really a cost issue. But those hydrants are also used to maintain this potable water system. When we flush hydrants, they're used to scour the mains. So anything connected to the potable water needs to be compatible. So you wouldn't want two separate systems for fear of cross contamination. And it would be way too costly to have a separate whole fire system throughout the town of Brattleboro.
Thank you, Steve. And Chrissy, can you speak to the expected useful life of the new plant, please?
Absolutely. So we actually did a useful life evaluation. And, and that's actually part of our funding program. So the different components in the building and the building itself all have different life spans. The building itself, we use a, an average lifespan of 40 years. Same thing with concrete structures that'll be on the site, so the equalization basin. The water pumps, when we get down to the mechanical equipment, that tends to have a 20-year lifespan. So generally, when we do these analyses, the, you know, we put 20 years on a water pump. However, your, the, the water pumps in Brattleboro, the raw water and the finished water pumps actually have been running for over 30 years now. But we do put, we do put 20 in there for this analysis. Same thing with the filters because of the internal parts that need to be replaced. We put 20 years on that. SCADA is an electrical system. It's a, it's a programming and electrical system, so that tends to have a 10-year lifespan. All of the piping that we're going to be doing inside the plant and under all buried piping outside the plant is generally a 70 to 80-year lifespan. And then all of the building support systems inside the building, all the process, all of the mechanical, all, everything inside the building is again, another 20-year lifespan. So when we look at the, the percentages of, of all of these different components in the building in the, in the project, we actually have an average useful life of 30 years for, for this facility.
And the one thing I would add to that is that the components that Christie described that have shorter useful life, some as short as 10 years. Those are the kinds of things we would address through our capital improvement plan for the utilities fund. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't plan to do additional borrowing for the replacement of those shorter life items. We are based on the borrowing that was done a decade ago and the major improvements to the sewer system. And now this borrowing to do this major improvement for the water system, we wouldn't expect to, to incur additional debt for a very long time in the utility system.
Thank you. Is that good, Tom?
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, I think the, they, the question about the fire hydrants is a great one because I think about that every time I flush the toilet. You know, what a shame to be flushing potable water in a way. But the practicality of it is you have to, you couldn't split three. Now I'm asking for three different sets of pipes, Steve. Is that okay? Sorry for the commentary, but it's a good questions coming in. David Levinbach.
Hi, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I understand that the financial situation is makes this a good time to go ahead. But if we were not to do the project this year or next year or the year after, what would the drawback speed?
The main drawback would be enormous risk of failure of major components of the treatment system and and, you know, actually in ways that Chrissy could describe better than I can, as far as the actual, you know, how it would affect our usage. You know, the worst case scenario would be if, if it wasn't possible for the plant to function and pump out the water that, that it does as our primary source of water. You know, we'd become heavily reliant daily on that capacity down at the wells at the retreat wells, which as Steve indicated, for a stopgap measure is a useful, you know, supplemental part of the system, but certainly couldn't be a primary water source for the whole community. So, you know, I'll defer to Chrissy here in a second to talk more explicitly about what those problems would be. But in a nutshell, what we've got is a 31, 32-year-old plant that most of the components of which were built for, for a 20-year useful life. And where there is, there are, you know, safety issues and in some cases, particularly related to the structural integrity of the building. You know, we've nursed it along farther than we thought we might be able to, honestly. Because it was, there, there were some design deficiencies in, in the original building. It, there's just an urgent need to, to do this project. And we're fortunate that the financing terms are so favorable because of, you know, broader influences on those rates. Chrissy, could you talk about what would happen to us as a community if we took that risk and then major systems failed at the plant?
Sure. So some of your systems at the plant are already have some redundancy and some of them don't. The filters are run at a, at a speed where the, where all three of them need to run and they run 16 hours a day right now. And so if you were to lose one of your filters, you now have to increase the speed at which the other two are running, which is going to decrease water quality. It's going to be a lot harder for the operators to meet the regulatory requirements of providing safe, clean drinking water. You know, if you were to lose one of your raw water pumps, feeding water to the plants, you'd be running the remaining single pump 16 hours a day, every single day. And, and same thing with the finished water pumps. So it's really important to keep that plant in, in a, in good operational condition. The other point, the other part of it is the there is no regulatory order from the state at this point. There is a your maximum day demand is just over 2 million gallons a day. So technically there is an exceedance of the capacity of the plant, which is 2 million gallons on paper right now. And so because the town has been planning this since 1999, basically, the, the state has seen that as, as forward progress towards regulatory compliance. And if that forward progress were to stop for a long enough period of time, they would issue a, a regulatory order to force the project to happen. And it's, it's really better to let these things happen, to have these things happen on your terms and, and not on theirs. So I do think it's, it's very important, you know, to provide the, the quantity of water that the town requires. You, you really do need to keep the Pleasant Valley Treatment Plant up and running in good operational order.
Thank you. Dr. Tortellani is up next.
Thank you. Thank you very much and good evening, everybody. Tortellani, District 2. Three questions. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for the, this has been a very educational evening and appreciate it very much. It was mentioned that the new building is going to be larger than the existing main building. Square footage, I was kind of curious as to how much bigger and what the square footage would be. Number two, I was wondering if you're planning, once the older building is decommissioned, to demolish it? And if that's part of the cost of the project? And three, I can't help but ask this question because of the back pain involved and all those fellows shoveling the roof, the flat roof, what the pitch of the new roof is going to be? That's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Chrissy?
Good question. Thank you.
So the, the existing plant, I'm just doing some math here. The existing plant is 48 by 90, which gives us a foot, an area of 4,300 square feet approximately. The new plant is going to be 130 by 70, which is gives us 9,100 square feet. And then there's the additional three bay garage on top of that. So that's the that's the difference in, in area. It's going to allow us to provide a lot more space and access. We, we're not going to have, right now, the, the blowers that clean the filters are actually tucked in between the filters. So they're really hard to access and inspect. So a lot more space. We're going to be able to fit that extra filter in there, have storage room. And, and the operators are going to be much happier and safer. The next question was
Demolition.
Demolition, yes, we are demolishing the existing treatment plant. So once we get those last two filters out of there and they're refurbished and put into the new plant, the existing plant will be demolished. That is part of this project's cost. And it actually will be turned into a parking lot after that. So there is quite a bit of phasing that goes into this project to make it all happen. What was the third question?
Pitch of the roof.
Thank you. So yes, this roof is not flat. I don't remember the exact pitch off the top of my head, but it is not flat. It is also structurally. It is, is the structural design of it is sufficient to carry a snow load. It's sufficient to carry the piping loads that hang off the ceiling. It's been designed properly to, to handle all of the loads that it needs to handle, which is one of the issues with the existing building. It was not designed properly. So they shouldn't have to shovel this one. And it is not flat.
Chrissy, I think it's important that the representatives realize that there was a problem with the CAD system when the building was designed back in 89. So what happened was when those formulas were put in there to calculate the roof load, there, they found out years later that there was a problem with the, the particular formula, formulas. So the, the intention was that was supposed to be able to support the, the weights. But they did find a flaw and that's the reason this one's been triple checked. So we don't have to shovel it.
Yeah.
Good to know. More good questions and answers. Thank you, everyone. Ruth is up next. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you so much. And I'm wondering, maybe this is putting the, I don't know if this is the appropriate venue for this question because we haven't voted to approve it. But assuming we approve this to go through, which I imagine we will. I'm wondering if you could talk about how you're going to choose the people who are actually going to build this. You know, the plans seem amazing. It seems like such a wonderful project, but if it's implemented poorly, you know. So yeah, I'm wondering about that.
So there are extremely detailed specifications for not just the design of the plant, but also sort of what's expected in the construction process. There are choices the contractor gets to make, as Chrissy spoke to, you know, scheduling and some other aspects of the means by which they will get their, their project done once they're selected. But there is a competitive bidding process to make sure that, that we're getting the proper price for the work. And part of that is also for the contractors to demonstrate their track record, their, their ability to perform a project of this sophistication. Chrissy, you might want to speak in again, more detail than I'm able to about that vetting process.
Sure. A lot of times when, when people hear federal funding, you immediately think that the contract's going to the lowest bidder. And, and what kind of quality is that going to be? So in this case, that is true. It, it does typically go to the lowest bidder. But we do qualifications review, so the contractor has to submit us quite a bit of information. We do call references. We call people who they don't list as references. We, we do check, we do our due diligence and make sure that they are qualified contractor. And we actually have had situations in the past where with this same funding program, the, the funding, the funding representative has supported us in, in selecting the next highest bidder because the lowest bidder wasn't qualified. So they, they absolutely will do that if necessary. And then another part of it is that all of the design team that was involved, so my company, the, the electrical engineer, structural, architectural, mechanical, geotech, they're all going to be involved during construction. So my company will actually have somebody there full time. So whenever the contractor is working, we will have a representative there to observe everything that the contractor is doing, to make sure that they're following the specifications, to make sure everything is being constructed properly and in compliance with all of the specifications and regulatory requirements. And then as needed, we'll have the other disciplines come in as well and make site visits, do inspections. So there is quite a bit of oversight throughout the construction process.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruth. And we're working our way through the R's. So up next is Ruben.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Tim. So I hope this is not too comical of a question, but especially in light that everybody here, or at least the presenters are in favor of this plan. But if you could get into the mind of a dissenting voice, what kind of argument or logic, aside from the price tag, would they make against this? And I don't have the expertise to think of that myself, so I'm kind of hoping you do.
I love that question, actually.
Yeah. It's not comical at all. I think it's a very fair question. Honestly, I hope my answer isn't completely unsatisfying. Under the particular circumstances, I think it's very difficult to make an argument against this project because of the age and condition of the existing facilities, because of the rigor that has gone into the planning process for, you know, it began 20 years ago, but it's been really intense over the last three or four years. You know, examining lots of other ways in which this could have been done and focusing on this as the best way to do it. And the very favorable financing terms that are available to us and under the current offer from the state of Vermont. The combination of those things, given the current configuration of our system, I think, you know, makes it really difficult to think of any reason other than the cost that somebody might object to it. I will say that, you know, a couple of generations ago, there was quite a lot more dynamic conversation around whether or not the town needed sophisticated water treatment at all. And that decision took, you know, several different bond votes and was a, a, you know, a difficult one for the community because we were going from, you know, very simple sort of old fashioned system to the modern technology and the, you know, all those sophisticated controls as well as the sophisticated treatment. There were some serious issues that occurred here in the 1970s related to poor water quality in the system, you know, opening up your tap and getting visibly unclean water coming out of it that led to the ultimate approval of the plan and construction of it in the 1980s. But now that we've had, you know, that system in place for so long and what we're doing basically is replacing it in kind with modern technology and what we have has all but worn out. It's I think hard to make an argument against it. Of course, I don't sit in a in a particularly objective seat about it.
Right. Thank you for that answer, Peter. I'm wondering if Chrissy has any input on that.
Reasons why not to do the project? I, I mean, I, I think I'm kind of with Peter on this one. You know, we've, we've, I've spent the past four years now evaluating this plant. And my, my colleague, predecessor spent many, many, many years before that evaluating it. So we have quite a bit of data on the plant and you know, quite a bit of experience with, with the systems and it, you know, it really is time to replace the plant before it, before it fails on you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the time.
Sure. Okay. Let's go on to our last R for now. Okay, let's go on to our last R for now. Ralph. Whoops, we can't hear you yet. Do you have another?
Now you can. Now you should be able to. Ralph, Mima District Three. I have four questions. First of all, in, in the system walkthrough, there was reference to a backup generator. I'm just wondering if it made any sense at all to consider a backup battery as an alternative. In, in, in looking at what sort of backup capacity you need, I'm wondering what your assumptions were of the sort of average or even maximum number of hours that the plant would have to be able to operate without grid power, just out of curiosity. I'm also wondering about whether you looked at the use of a battery, not only for backup purposes, but also to reduce peak loads in order to, to be able to save money on demand charges. But I don't know anything about the load profile of a water treatment plant. So you know, if, if it's, if it's very sort of non-variable, then that would not really be a concern. Only if you have big spikes in load, would you, would you want to have something that helped you to get your demand charges down? And then my last question is really just more sort of general curiosity. People have told me that we have a gravity fed water supply system for the town of Brattleboro. And I would imagine a lot of that has to do with the elevation of the, of the reservoir, but it, it sounds like it may be gravity fed, but there still has to be a lot of different pumps. You know, using, using power to move water around before gravity then I guess begins to suck it down toward, toward most users. So those are, those are my, my four questions.
So I'll answer the last one and then defer to Chrissy or Steve on the remaining questions about the power, probably Chrissy on the design of the power systems. The, the, you're right, there are pumps in the system. Certainly, we talked about some of that tonight in terms of how water gets pumped after it's treated in the plant, how it gets pumped up into the three million gallon tank. There are places elsewhere in the system where that happens in order to get the water up to those other tanks, to the elevation from which it can then flow through the distribution system to our homes and, and businesses by gravity, but it is because we're such a hilly place and the tanks have been strategically placed. You know, we actually operate the, the bulk of the movement of water through the system is by gravity rather than by pump.
Okay, interesting.
So on the generator. We did not, we didn't look at a battery. And I'm not quite sure how, I don't know enough about it to, to really give you a great answer right now. But we do have quite a bit of, quite a bit of horsepower going on there. So we have the raw water pumps are fifty horsepower, or sorry, seventy five horsepower. The finished water pumps are fifty horsepower. The blowers are fifteen horsepower, I believe. And so there's quite a bit going on there. So I'm not sure if, if a battery would be capable of handling all of that. I have electrical engineer who, who tells me all these things and he's not, he's not here right now. But the generator was sized, it is, it is sized to provide at least twenty four hours of power. And so as I noted before, the plant runs for sixteen hours a day. And then also in that such, the generator is, is diesel fueled, so it will run for twenty four hours and then once you refill it, it'll run for another twenty four hours. So in a, in a long duration power outage, you would be just fine. And then as for reducing peak loads, we actually are working with Efficiency Vermont on how to address peak loads. We do have some, some peaks, you know, when the pumps come on. But for the, for the most part, you know, when the way the plant works is the finished water pumps come on when the tank says it's getting low. And then the plant turns on and that triggers the raw water pumps to turn on. And then all of that stuff just runs for sixteen hours straight. Okay, so I would say it's pretty non-variable.
Right. Yeah, it sounds like it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Chris Chapman is up next. Welcome, Chris.
There we go. Thanks. I had to, I'm, I'm one of these old guys who's just getting used to the modern technology. Hey. I've got several questions, but I wanted to preface them by telling you how grateful I am for the care and skill and experience and dedication of everyone we've heard from tonight. I am so impressed. I'm so glad I moved back here to raise my kids where I grew up. Really, I, we, we never hear enough, I think, about the dedication of our public servants in Brattleboro. When I was a select board member, I was I wasn't stunned, but I was just impressed by how how fortunate we are to have a culture of, of dedication here. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody concerned. And now to get to my questions. The first one I have is because I work downtown when I'm able to work downtown. And when I get back to working downtown, how will the taste of the water be changed, if at all, by the water quality improvement that, that is apparently going to, to, that we're apparently going to experience here? Another question is with regard to other capital expenses that might be in the pipeline. Speaking of the pipeline, you know, is, is there you know, another question or asked about or commented on old pipes? And that's tangential to this project, but it is literally and figuratively connected to it. And, and is that another expense in the, in, in, well, in the pipeline for our capital planning? And finally, you know, because we've got a new big roof, I'm a solar power bug now, been bitten hard. And use it myself at my house and I'm so glad I did. Is there something? Is there some use that can be made to both this and other municipal building roofs? To generate solar power, it's a free source of energy made expensive only by the equipment that it takes to transform it from solar energy to electricity. But it seems like the town has already taken some wonderful initiatives like out at the landfill. Which is very impressive. You know, someone who plans to be around as long as I can help it for the rest of my life. Can you, can you tell me where we stand with something like that opportunity? I mean, we've got such wonderful engineering going on, such careful engineering. Could that be in, in, in the pipeline as well? So that's several questions. But I'd love to hear answers from it as a, as, as a, as a very curious citizen. And, and oh, by the way, also a taxpayer.
Welcome to stay with us here, Chris. Don't go away.
Thank you.
So the, the pipes question is a good one. There is not water main replacement as part of this borrowing. The, the purpose of this borrowing is for this treatment facility and the SCADA system. We do have an ongoing program of replacing aged mains and you know, there's, there's ways in which we do sort of more spot maintenance on areas where we run into issues. And then there's, you know, larger scale replacement as part of, you know, certain larger scale projects typically. So like up on Putney Road, there will be water main replacement on a pretty large scale that's already planned for and already, you know, addressed in the town's participation with the state of Vermont, preparing for that project. But the, those, those pipe replacement projects are factored into our long-term capital planning for the utility fund. And would be part of the pay-as-you-go operation of the utility fund. So we wouldn't anticipate a, an additional bond measure at some point, you know, in the foreseeable future that would be related to pipe replacement. That service on top of what we're asking for in this project.
Yeah.
And then on taste and solar, I need to defer to Chrissy.
Okay.
So the taste of the water. You probably won't notice really a change. We're going to be using the same exact treatment process. So we're, we're replacing everything. We are increasing the regulatory capacity of the plant, but the process is all the same. Same filtration process, the same.
Had a little
blip.
Pick up with Chrissy there.
Oh dear.
Steve, do you want to finish Chrissy's sentence while we're waiting or?
Yes, I will. So what she was about to say. Is that we're, we do have the, it's going to be the same filtration type system. But I will add that we're going to have additional filter so that we can slow down the process, which should help improve the quality during some of the times of year where we have some taste and odor problems. You know, normally that would be at the late summer. That's when you can sometimes have a musty smell. There, there's still be, there still will be a chlorine residual, which is unpleasant to many. But that's part of water filtration. People that want to drink that water can simply fill a container, leave the cap off overnight and the chlorine will dissipate. So the, but the answer to that question is it should help improve the water quality at different times of the year with the same technology, but with an additional filter. The solar, the solar components could be added. But you know, when we looked at, we met with Efficiency Vermont and we looked at the variable frequency drives and off-peak pumping and these, this heat pump is, is really big as far as I'm concerned of using this heat pump for cooling and heating. So we focused on those disciplines for the energy savings up here, right up front. Now that's not to say that, you know, solar panels could be added to later date. We talked about they could either be installed on the roof. Or at Pleasant Valley, there's a whole embankment there that could accommodate solar also. And in some places are actually using solar on some of their reservoirs. Although I don't think, you know, we would push for that up here with the freezing temperatures and such because the reservoir freezes over. But it is, it is something to take in consideration. And as far as the transmission mains that Peter talked about in nineteen eighty nine, when we did that upgrade, upgrade for the water treatment plant. There is a large infrastructure project done. We relined our sixteen inch transmission main from Pleasant Valley all the way down Weston Avenue and High Street. We added a new water main at twelve inch main that went from Weston Avenue over to Maple Street and fed the south end of town. And we included pressure reducing valves and such. So there was a lot of work that was done at that time to improve the distribution system.
Great. Hey, thank you very much. And I really thank you, Steve. You know, you've, how long have you been in the, with the town? Thirty years?
Since nineteen eighty.
Thirty-one years or on your thirty-first year. Well, congratulations and my thanks. And then our town, right, goodness. And, and our, and our town manager, second generation town manager. Talk about longevity. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, Chris. You got a second generation coming up in the wings there, Steve, or?
There you go.
Thanks again, Chris, and welcome, Dan. Feel free to jump in if you, if you have some answers. We may have lost Chrissy for the time being. I'm not sure, but I haven't seen her come back. Gary Stroh. Welcome. Here we are.
Hey, hi, how you doing, guys? Good to see you again tonight. I have a two-part question. It's going to be quick, brief. The first part, I guess Steve could answer, Dan. With the new filtration going in with that increase, the amount of pressure coming into the households, would that be about the same pretty much as far as using water in the homes and, you know, sinks and showering and all that?
So the answer to that question is no, we will not change. The elevation of the tank at Pleasant Valley Treatment Plant dictates what the pressure will be in the system. So that will not change. The pressure will be, remain the same.
Oh, okay. And I guess the second part to my story is with that, looking at the graph, what you were showing us about the cost, what it's going to be for homeowners, was it? How much they would be paying? Does that include renters also as well? Because if a homeowner is renting out, I asked my landlord three questions. What will increase your rent? He said taxes, water and heat. And electric. So that being said, if that goes up, will that differentiate the cost of living renting now? With people?
Yep, it, it could. It depends on that relationship that each individual renter has. So whether, you know, in some cases you, renters might be paying the utility bill directly. If you're paying it through your rent, then yes, the, these rate increases could affect the rent. But the magnitude of the increase, the, the reason we showed a one-person household, a two-person household and a five-person household was to give a feel for folks of the magnitude of the increase that would likely be impacting you as a customer of this system, whether you're paying that, that fee directly to the town or whether you're paying it through your rent.
Okay, I see. Cause that's different, like say with Wyndham Housing, they already have their own system and everything set up in place and a set cost. But if you're renting from a homeowner, say I rent from Tim and it's legitimate, cost of living, cost of increase, cost of taxes, this is going to, I think, maybe looking at probably a second proposal for less. Might be something for people that are renting or coming into moving in because that was a big issue in Brattleboro with renting with the cost. Is there another solution or another proposal that might be suggested or in the, or in there somewhere that can help out renters? Along with homeowners, because I'm having a lot of stuff that's coming up with increases. So I guess that's a question that as being a district two representative, I guess I'm asking for my people in my district that question.
Sure.
So I can sort of take a crack at that a little bit. I haven't been able to talk much, but because you brought me up, you know, some landlords include the cost of water and all utilities in, in, in the case of the one building that I own and rent out. You, I, it's all connected, so I, I can't separate off different apartments. And that's true with electric. So everything's just paid in one big bill for me. So incremental small increases like the one that we're proposing here, whereas being proposed here are not giant impacts on the cost for me. So I don't look at, you know, a five dollar increase per quarter and say, oh, I'm gonna raise the rent five dollars because that's pretty
Right.
pick a yun and not really good business. But overall, of course, that might influence a landlord's rent that they would be looking for. So I think it's very hard to answer that question because it's a case by case basis, Gary, honestly. But the, you should know that the select board, every year, we look at these rates and we look at the money coming in and the money we need to spend. And we look at the, the, the rates that the, the rate pairs will be paying. And we adjust accordingly. And sometimes we go with staff recommendations and sometimes we say, no, that feels a little bit too much. Let's spread it out over a longer period of time and, and have less in reserves. So we're trying to
Because we'll, I guess, because now we're waiting for the COVID relief and a lot of people are still struggling at this time and, you know, job wise and otherwise, and that, a lot of other factors that are involved, just trying to kickstart not just the economy, people's cost of living. And who knows what next year is going to hold the cola, but trying to get that balance in there without something else increasing to try to catch up to that. So that's something I guess a lot of representatives and a lot of people are going to be looking at with this course because it impacts the landlords and I totally understand. And I agree that, you know, landlords are giving an accommodation to renters. And that is a great thing and, but to bring in more people to come into the town to live. And that's the first thing they're probably going to see if they're moving into this town, they're going to consider also too. So this is something that's to, I guess, wrestle around with to think about also with the course. So before the next town meeting, we have Saturday. Thank you guys so much.
Absolutely.
Gary, one thing I would like to point out is in many of the multiple unit houses, they have the same size as a residential home. So the base charges are actually split between all the users, you know, renting. So in some cases, it's actually less money for a renter per unit versus a single family home. It all depends on the size of the meter, but it, it does. And even if you look at the rates that we showed you, you'll see that the unit cost per person, it starts to go down a little bit.
And being that we're getting a lot of energy efficient things in the homes too, makes a difference. Like my landlord put a new toilet and energy efficient toilet flushing. It makes a difference and I did that with the sink and stuff. So that being an incentive also probably for landlords with this would be something great too to have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary. Thanks for putting the representative in the, right in the title there. You're representing your people. And renters, if you hear that toilet running, trickling out, please tell your landlord immediately. Because that can add up. All right, Michael Bosworth, welcome.
Hi, Michael Bosworth, District One. Sort of a follow-up question to Ralph Mima and Chris Chapman about energy and energy usage. And some of this might have been delivered before and, and I agree, it's been excellent, excellent presentation. But the projections after, if this, if this goes ahead, after it's all done, will we be using less power, less electricity or more? And same thing, will heat be completely from the heat pump or other, other sources? And anything else you might want to address as far as energy use? I'd be interested in hearing.
Chrissy, you address that, please?
Welcome back. Thank you. So right now we are, we're working with Efficiency Vermont and we haven't, they, they're actually doing a full analysis of, of the given plant for us. So we're waiting to get the results of that. So I can't tell you if it's going up or down. For the most part, all the components are similar to the previous components in the existing plant. And then of course, the heating system is going to be through, through the heat pumps, which will have some, some power involved, but no, no fossil fuels. The heat is completely from the heat pumps. There is no other heating system. Same thing with the cooling. It's all entirely from the heat pumps, no other system. So once we get more information back on the evaluation of the new plant, the proposed plant, we can certainly share that with anybody who's interested.
And so as far as use of fossil fuels, just, is that just the back of the generator that might take that? And that's the only thing? Is that correct or not?
That is correct. It's just the generator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it'll be great to see some of those numbers once they start coming in. George Carville.
There. Just took some quick, quick question. Does Davis Bacon apply to this? Will it be, will the construction jobs be union scale? And will there be any opportunity for local jobs as part of the construction?
Chrissy, federal regulations that apply to the job.
So yes, this project under the funding will require the use of Davis Bacon wage rates. It's also American iron and steel and it's also supporting disadvantaged business enterprise. So those are the, the three big federal requirements that we have. As for local jobs, you know, we'll have a, a, probably a larger contractor that might not be local, that would be a GC very likely. But oftentimes they do hire local, local contractors to do things like site work. The electricians, plumbers. So there is certainly an opportunity for local companies to be hired by the general contractor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands. Can, can someone just fill me in on Davis Bacon? Is that what I heard? I, I'm not part of the in-crowd.
It's a name of federal regu, a federal legislation from a long time ago, I think back in the 1930s, but don't hold me to that. That applies to when federal money is being spent on projects like this. Then there's particular requirements about the wages that are paid and the type of labor that is used.
Great. Thank you. That's what's so great about this job is you learn a lot of things as you go as well as in the past. Peter.
There are no additional questions. On behalf of the team, I would say thank you for the questions we received. It was rich. I thought that was a really good conversation and hopefully it's helpful to the members in preparation for the discussion that'll happen on Saturday.
Absolutely. I wanted to say, first of all, of course, thank you to everybody, the team involved. And even though our participant size was smaller, the questions were just plenty of them and very rich. So I really appreciate that. And I'll be encouraging reps who didn't make this to go ahead and, and watch this if they have time. This Saturday, everyone is Representative Town Meeting. And 8:30 AM. It's going to be using these same Zoom coordinates. However, if you are a member of the public, you'll be asked to join by phone. Just stop me if I say anything completely wrong because I don't want to give bad information. 8:30 AM this Saturday and it's going to be a really nice weekend. So some of us are hoping it's going to go really well. But we can't count on it. It may go into Sunday. So. That's all. Thank you. Unless anyone else has further thoughts? Thank you very much. Have a great evening and happy St. Patty's.